City Council meeting for City of Petoskey for September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I ask that you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. City Clerk Beth Back, would you please call roll?
Demore, present. Shield?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Walker, present. Murphy?
Present. We have a quorum. Next, I'm going to read a proclamation regarding domestic violence, abuse awareness, in response to the Women's Research Center's request. Domestic abuse awareness month is October. Whereas the Women's Research Center of Northern Michigan and the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence is commemorating October two thousand twenty-two as Domestic Violent Abuse Awareness Month. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community throughout the United States and the world. And whereas the month of October seeks to expand awareness of the incident of domestic violence and abuse, primarily focusing on the survivors who have suffered emotional and physical trauma, and also to celebrating the achievements of domestic abuse advocacy groups throughout the state and nation. Whereas through the inspiration, courage, and persistence of survivors, their fa- fa- friends and their support groups, legislation has been enacted to provide protection and services for those experiencing domestic abuse. And whereas more work remains to solve this serious problem, and whereas all community members have a role to play in this, and whereas the government officials, domestic abuse programs, social service agencies, faith organizations, educational institutions, healthcare providers, and funding agencies are joining in this effort to promote an awareness of the issue of domestic abuse and ensure available support group services for those survivors. Now hereby be resolved that I, John Murphy, Mayor Petoskey, Michigan, in behalf of all of the residents do proclaim October two thousand twenty-two as Domestic Abuse Awareness Month. Sign today. You know, it happens not just with women, but it also happens with men. I had the experience of knowing somebody in the last six months that was going through a very abusive relationship, and we were able to get her to the right services and to him. And I just want to say that everybody plays a part in this thing and this community. We're the eyes and ears of the community and we're the support for those that need it, that are survivors as well. Next, a proclamation by Peter Bucci, Executive Director and Chief Operating Officer of Harbor Hall. Uh, we went over, Shane, City Manager, myself and Zach, our City Planner, as well as some City Council members, have spent some time over there, uh, two, three hours, uh, meeting with them and felt it was important for them to come forward and share with you the information they shared with us. So I'm going to introduce Peter and say, take it away, Peter. The mic.
Right here.
Yes, you want to bend it up so you dial it in? Well, you're, you're actually talking to City Council, so don't worry about the audience who are not, it's here.
All right. Uh, my name's Peter Bucci. I'm the Chief Clinical Officer and Executive Director currently at Harbor Hall. I took over for Pat again back in January. So we're coming up on one year of my term so far. Uh, a lot of changes have taken place uh, since that year and previously, um, that was handed off to me. Uh, so what I'd like to do is kind of give you a little community update about what's going on. We are where we planted in the middle of the community. Um, I want to reiterate, uh, or highlight our current mission. Um, the only thing that you'll notice if you've ever knew our previous mission to what it currently is is we've expanded. Uh, we've taken the cap off of care and treatment for individuals. Uh, so we are here to provide professional treatment and guidance to individuals and families. We don't just deal with substance use. Uh, the substance use issue is all throughout and affects all areas of the family and the individual. Um, so we're not limiting ourselves to substance use specific. Uh, we do mental health, behavioral health, uh, psychological care, primary care, physical care, in addition to the substance use. This, these are the service areas, um, that we have expanded to. What started in nineteen seventy-four as a halfway house for men uh, has now expanded to be a full comprehensive healthcare company. Um, we don't just treat men, we treat everything. Uh, women began services over a year ago now. And we've had over a hundred ladies take place in treatment on our campus. Um, that does not include anything outside of our residential treatment. Um, but I want to point out that our expansion to services, one is this primary care. Uh, we are right in basically downtown and offer full primary care services to the community. It is not restricted to anybody. Um, we have behavioral health. We've got licensed counselors, social worker psychologists on staff that are available um, to provide full comprehensive mental health and behavioral health care issues. We are currently still doing addictions. Nothing there has changed. Um, assessments, testing services. Um, we are fully licensed by the state credential. Um, aside we can go, uh, and the new addition as well is case management, assisting people finding uh, housing and employment, um, and any of those additional services which tend to be insurances, be it remaining sober or remaining mentally healthy, uh, or continuing on in society in a beneficial way. Um, some of the questions that, uh, I would say Harbor Hall feels this slide is intended to highlight some of those questions. The types of insurance we provide, all of them. Uh, we service Medicaid, Medicare, um, private insurances, self-pay clients. Uh, we have very little limits, um, to what type of clients or persons we are capable of serving. Um, if you need the help, we will either give it to you or we will help you get it. Um, the resources are abundant in this city. The city has been more than helpful uh, and more than welcoming with the clientele that we service. And that is evident by the types of resources that we are capable of utilizing, community volunteering. A lot of, uh, community members in the neighborhood, uh, seek assistance with getting their houses ready for the winter time or clearing leaves and debris during the, um, springtime. Uh, man food, uh, women's resource, Salvation Army, even the city of Petoskey, um, able to let us volunteer, um, some services to the city. Our service recipients, it's probably the number one question that we get, uh, in fiscal year, um, twenty-one, twenty-two, we serviced six hundred clients from across the state. Um, three hundred ninety-five of the clients come from this northern region. That's about sixty-five percent somewhere in there. Um, and two hundred and five clients come from the lower region or the mid-state region. Uh, so it's a much smaller number of clientele in that, that region. Two hundred and ninety of them come from the Charlemagne County, from the Boynton County area. So that is about as local as we can get. I believe the number is a hundred and ninety-nine come from the county alone. Um, so this is your back door. Um, we are here to service our own people. Uh, what I put down at the bottom there is additions to this community. Forty-two clients are considered homeless. That number comes from the two hundred and five from the mid-state region. Uh, most of the clients from mid-state are all, uh, independent, uh, or dependent in their housing options, which means they will and have to return back home. They have homes that they go to. Uh, they have dependent, uh, services that they're attached to. They don't have the option to relocate to this area. The only people that could potentially relocate to this area would be the forty-two clients listed as homeless. Uh, and in order to switch services and gain services in the northern region, you actually have to find independent housing, which at this moment is pretty impossible. So I would say ninety-nine percent, if not a hundred, of all the clients from the mid-state region return back home and do not remain in this area past the treatment stay. Uh, this question, uh, with this slide, um, is our role. Uh, Harbor Hall was designed to meet and meet. Uh, Harbor Hall was not created simply because, uh, you know, there was a desire to open up a place and put a bunch of people in it. Uh, there is a significant need in this community specifically, um, as evidenced by the numbers. Uh, and we only grow to meet that particular need. Our expansion is based on our success rates. I want to point out that the success rates of the clients that we service are based in the community services. So clients that come in residential have a particular percentage of success, and that's about seventy percent. The clients that transition into community-based services or back into the community to live have a ninety percent chance of success. That is where we want them to receive treatment. They're working, they're providing services in the community, they're back in the economy, they're back with their families, they're back paying their taxes and their bills. That is where real life takes place. It doesn't take place in a residential center. It takes place back where they're at home. Uh, so the reason why we expanded in the first place was not just to, um, to make sure that we're treating an unmet, untreated market of women, but to also recognize that we are growing, the number of clients that we've serviced is growing every single year. Um, so that's why we are expanding. Phase one was the administrative building. And again, we, you know, had an original plan of a larger structure. We split it into the two structures. We have an administrative building, uh, for primary care and the women's residence. Um, with eight beds for the women, uh, and then again, that full community primary care and the executive and billing offices above that. But phase two, which is hopefully complete December, January, we're pretty optimistic about it, is thirty-two bed short-term living apartments. That's for that transitional living. Again, anybody receiving treatment that they can have access to that. Anybody needing to move from one location to another to receive safe, secure housing can do so. Um, there are very few restrictions on the housing, if any. Um, and the intent is to provide people that transitional period, uh, to go from a rough time of life into a better time of life, which is why we've also added on all those other services of case management and providing primary care onsite. Um, I want it to be a one-stop shop for getting people secure, um, back on their feet again, ready to reengage in life. That's all I have. Thank you for the time and opportunity to speak about.
I will probably have some questions. Um, what do you term short-term, Peter? What do you term, uh, short-term living apartments? What is short-term?
It's based on the need of, of the person receiving the service. So that can be anywhere from, you know, a couple of weeks, if that's all the, the individual needs. Again, the purpose of adding on case managers to help the, um, the, the client or the service recipient get to where they need to go is to assist them in getting into secure permanent house, um, which is where more success happens. This is a transient period. Uh, that's the purpose of the apartments is to be a short-term arrangement.
Okay.
Getting them into something independent and permanent, that's really successful.
Okay. So, Ms. Demore?
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Um, when you say full primary care is available to the community, can you explain a little bit more what you mean by that? Is that within the scope of mental, psychological, behavioral health? Are you talk, talking?
Talking regular standard primary care. We have two physicians, uh, on staff. One's contracted, one's on staff. We have a PA, uh, two MAs. Um, so we deal with medication management, aches and pains, uh, you know, they're primary care physicians. So it's a primary care clinic. Um, any, any need you have, we can handle it.
So literally anybody in the community that would have a primary care need can access it there. Thank you.
Mr. Shield?
Thanks for your time. The forty-two homeless clients, those, would they be utilized, the phase-two apartments? And, um, can you speak generally to, is that forty-two homeless, is that a, is that an increase? You see an increase in uh, clients who are, um, in fact, or however you register homeless?
Uh, I would say I've seen a decrease in it. Um, there are more social services available to apartments. Uh, I'd say the pandemic actually benefited that process. It highlighted the significant need in the community. However, any client has access to that. Um, that forty-two, though it's a large number, that number is only highlighting the clients that come from the downstate region.
Okay.
Um, that does not include any of those that are homeless in our region. Um, so I picked that number specifically. Highlight clients that could potentially relocate to this area, um, but they have to find independent housing. So again, the purpose of the transient housing or the short-term living arrangement is to get them into permanent location. Most of these clients, even though they're listed as homeless, still have some type of family attachment. And again, they're going to return back home. That's our primary goal is to return into their home area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Peter. The, um, short-term housing, does that require paying rent? I'm thinking it does, but I don't recall.
Yes.
Yeah. So that they have a job and they have to, yeah, not given the housing?
There are some clients that do benefit from grant funding or, um, you know, social services funding. Um, there are a lot of resources in this area that assist in housing. Rent reimbursement, payment, stuff like that. So we work with the other agencies.
And another question on, um, kind of the short-term transition housing. I was asked when I was campaigning, you know, two years ago, uh, knocking on doors, somebody felt that there were many transition houses in Petoskey. And I don't think that's the case. I know of two, but do you, do you have any sense for how many there actually are?
Um, I, I know of one that was in what I would consider the downtown area. Another one just sort of sprung up the last two years outside of the downtown area. Um, one is two miles outside of town.
Okay.
Um, and then there's our place.
That's what I thought. Okay.
The only ones that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak to council?
Jeff Grantham, I'm an eight oh one bachelor and look at our map. I'm the immediate neighbor to the west of Harbor Hall. We share a property line. And, uh, my only concern, and I'm glad that, um, Harbor Hall came and spoke to you and spoke to the community and in a way went on record, um, which they've done before in the June comments, uh, back in June or so. This is the depart, their intended use, I believe, is a departure from what was approved by the zoning board appeals to grant them permission to build that second building as a multi-family housing. It was deliberated over years, uh, how that was going to be put into practice, whether it was part of their campus. And if it was, it was an expansion of a non-conformal use, which is not allowed. And so that building that they referred to, I think, as phase two for the additional units, had to be broken apart from the rest of their parcel in order to, uh, meet the zoning requirements, have a, a for-profit, multi-family housing. And so when the new city planner came on, the new city manager came on, um, and this, uh, article in the New York Review was brought to light, um, I just felt it was important for everybody to go back to look at what was approved, see the site, see their intentions, and make sure that their use is what was approved because all the optics appear that this is just an expansion of their, facility. It's not apartments. It's not workforce housing or any jolo tongue rent for uh, a long period of time. Um, and if it is, then I'm sure that, uh, the waitlist is going to be long and hard and people that really need it aren't going to end up there. So, uh, really concerned about how they will, um, yield, uh, the people who will live there and without discrimination to, uh, and sex or weed or anything like that. So again, I asked you to review what was approved and compare it to their intent before it was allowed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to council at this time? Sir?
James Erst, uh, seven oh two Elizabeth Street. I live across the street from the transitional house that they have there and you know, we have went through these different meetings about what Harbor Hall is. And now the phase has been kind of redefined again. Uh, originally it was granted multi-family use for this new, uh, phase-two development there. And now we're being told this is pretty much going to be semi-residential for their clients, um, temporarily. You know, right now, they were already granted sixty-eight beds at their facility that they have. Now you put thirty-two, that's what I believe I read in the article that they sent in paper. Uh, so that puts it right up at a hundred, uh, beds, and that's quite a bit more than they were granted for what they're doing. And it seems to me at that time that, uh, Harbor Hall wasn't a full service. They're pretty much into, um, the drug and alcohol rehabilitation. Now they had expanded to many other services. It seems to me that I recall they were told they couldn't have, uh, drug intoxication going on there. But now apparently they can because they have, you know, all these, uh, medical providers there. And, uh, it was felt by the, I believe, the planning commission that should be done in a hospital setting because things go wrong with that. Um, they are using a lot of our city services and taking a lot of property off the taxpayer's rolls, you know. Uh, I have some problems with all this. You know, I have lived forty years across the street from them and I have seen it grow exponentially over the years, you know, from one facility to a whole street of Grove Street, then they're up Whistler Street. How they taken over, um, Fabian Brothers, and now they have taken over Grulers. You know, and they keep expanding at an accelerated rate and they keep redefining everything they did. You know, I feel this phase two is just kind of an end around to what the original plan was to have residential treatment for their services that they're doing. And they built it as family housing. And there was anything but that. At that time, we needed and we still do, uh, horrible family housing. I don't believe we're getting it with this type of deal, you know, so, um, as, uh, Mr. Grantham says there, maybe you should re-look at what's going on here. You know, if it's going the way it should be. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to council?
Chris Krasinski, three two two Route Three. I I was under the understanding that there were eight beds approved for their expansion. And I may have missed some of the readings or whatever because the bulk of the building is much bigger than the eight beds that was originally approved by the council. At least that's my understanding. So that's kind of where I left off. And I will try to get more information. I just don't know about what from eight to all these back.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak to council at this time? Wait. Is there anybody online that wishes to speak to council at this time? None. Okay, there's basically, I usually don't do this. It's really not required. Uh, usually when you address city council, we can just leave it at that and drop it and then we move on to the next thing. It's your personal opinion on this. Uh, we value personal opinions here. Uh, Peter, could you answer three questions for me? It was stated that you own the Grulers property. Do you own the Grulers property?
Well, I do not own the Grulers property.
Okay. Next one, um, one hundred beds. Do you have one hundred, hundred beds?
No, we have forty beds for them, which is a regional part of the building, and we have eight beds for women.
Okay. Okay. And then that's not.
Those are residential then.
Those are residential. And then you have transi- transitional.
We have twelve beds currently of the Grove and Elizabeth Street houses, um.
Okay.
Six.
Okay.
Will be the additional thirty-two beds in the second part of the building.
And will they be male, female, or you have the opportunity?
Yeah, we have the ability, um, to create.
So you have forty-four transitional pieces, and you have forty-eight residential beds where individuals are there through their first part of their process. Where are you? Okay. Last question was, uh, one of the questions somebody asked was, uh, eight beds approved. I'm not sure. I don't, I'm going to ask somebody that I think follows up on this.
I actually know what Chris is talking about.
Okay.
She's talking about the administration building with the eight beds for the women. That's, that phase was approved.
Yes.
The phase two is the thirty-two beds that's under construction right now.
Thank you. That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure we are all right. Peter, thank you for presenting to us. And, uh, that's it. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. It's approval, uh, adoption of a proposed resolution that would confirm approval of the following. August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two regress session and the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two special, uh, sessions, a city council meeting minutes, as well as acknowledge a receipt of a report concerning certain administrative transactions that have happened since August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I take it to council for possible changes, corrections, additions, or at the end of that, a possible approval. Mr. Moore?
Thanks for the reminder for the green light. We try to turn it off in between so you don't hear other noises, but thank you. Um, so just one really question on the record. On page seven, almost at the bottom quarter.
Wait, wait, wait. Everybody's got to turn there. Wait, wait, wait. Everybody's got to turn there. Okay.
There's a payment to Housing North of ten thousand dollars. For the record, I just asked Shane to.
Okay, so council approved a contract with Housing North for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. At a rate of five thousand dollars per year. We were not billed in twenty twenty-one. So that ten thousand dollar payment catches up our commitment to Housing North.
Thank you.
That doesn't take it out of the next year's budget. It is, I believe we approved it for the first five thousand and so that was already in the account for the money.
That's, that's correct. Yeah. So we've, at this point, council has. Followed through with their commitments, so there will be a new ask coming up, but we will have them. Present to council, talk about kind of what they've been up to as our partner. And then as, as the budget is considered, that will be, that will be part of the budget ask at this point.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion for Mr. Wagner and a second for Ms. Walker. Any other discussions, council? I turn it over to City Clerk back to parole.
Peggner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
DeMore?
I.
Shields?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, motion to accept their consent agendas five zero. Next, this is your opportunity. This is your opportunity. For miscellaneous public comment. You have the opportunity to come forward, give us your full name, full address. And address something that you feel you would like to discuss with city councils or say. It can be pretty much darn near anything unless it's a part of what's already coming on to the agenda. And I ask that you hold that so that you can be a part of that discussion. Is there anyone wishes to make miscellaneous public comment to city council at this time? Come on down.
James Ernst, seven oh two Elizabeth Street. Um, regards our city, uh, Maria here. And I was, I was at a gathering and stuff and we're talking about fishing and everything down there. And the problem related to that, the people who boat her I have is with the dock that they have. We brought your boats. Now, these people that I talked to, they're into salmon fishing and stuff like that. And they're telling me that any boat that's really much more than twenty foot long has trouble tying to those docks out there. They're too short with the wind that we have here. And so I was going to ask them, maybe we could. The extension of another section on these docks to make it more serviceable. And it's funny because, you know, I said, yeah, I go to city council, I could mention that to them. Because we have this ring upon it and that'd be a very good use of it for the. Marina here. But they're saying, because we've got so much wind, they can't tie their lines to the boat when they're trying to. Get on their trailers and get off their trailer and the whole swings and that. And then I talked to another. Assistant harbor master out of Point City and he said he had the same problem when he was here. You know, that the docks were just too short and it was very difficult to function out of the way. That setup is for in and out of the boats right there. So that's my only comment. Maybe you could look at extending the other section on that dock. Probably for next year, not nothing very soon. I can see that to be a problem, but that's something that you should look into. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager Horn, would you look into that possibly?
Sure, I'll talk to Kendall about it and see what options we may have.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to council at this time? Let's move on to the next, which is the appointment, consideration of appointments to the election commission. Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals.
Do you have any good my update?
Oh, yeah. First, we're going to have a city manager update, however. I'm all excited about these appointments because it's hard to get people to.
Sorry, I won't, I won't take much of your time. So, so quickly, I will run through this. Wanted to give a brief update on meetings this week. Downtown Management Board meets tomorrow at the regular scheduled date and time. Monthly time. So they're going to be looking at their budget, obviously, as we're going through our twenty twenty-three budget process. D M B is obviously part of that, so they're reviewing their parking budget and their programs and services budget. As well as preparing to make a recommendation for special assessment. It's, it's becoming that season to make that recommendation on to city council. So they'll be discussing that tomorrow at their regular meeting. This is a bit, this is a little bit of an unusual month being that it's five, five Thursdays. So actually, planning commission met last Thursday, being that that was the, actually, the third Thursday. At their regular time. They had a few items on their agenda. We had a public hearing for zoning district B three A for an amendment for an height allowance. And this brought out a number of folks to our meetings, which we certainly appreciate the interaction of the public at our meetings. That's, that's what we're here for and we're here to listen and learn and, you know, get comments back. So that was a, a good, healthy discussion during the meeting for this particular item. And just to clarify, and it was clarified then as well, there is no one development that's driving this request. There's been a lot of calls and emails about rumors of things. And there is, the villa is not looking to go higher. Other places around that section have not reached out with this desire. We are just trying to prepare that potential area as we look at potential development. If you're a hotel. Looking to come to Potaski, two stories is not going to get it done for you typically in your pro forma. So you need the additional height to be able to, to make it work economically. So we're trying to prepare this area as we look at the resort commercial district, looking for. Originally, it was four stories. It was reduced down to two stories from twenty-five feet. Or from two stories. Now we're looking at potentially going to three stories or thirty-seven feet. Which, which is consistent with our livable Potaski master plan as we look at future land use goals. So that's what this item was. Again, we had a pretty healthy discussion with community members. Ultimately, Planning Commission voted to not allow the height allowance. By a four to three vote. Other items on their agenda, we did approve or did have a public hearing for halo lid signs. So that was a complete. And then Zach went over some priority action items for the planning commission to kind of. Sink their teeth into, if you will, as we look at the livable Potaski master plan. And basically, the council is going to look at kind of the, the master list, if you will. And kind of come back to the next meeting. Actually. Zach's not here, but the chair is here. You're, you're having a special meeting, but it is not related to this. Okay. Okay, thank you. So they'll be having more detailed discussions on really where they want to roll their sleeves up next. As they look at planning enhancements related to the master plans. There'll, there'll be more discussion for that. And thank you. They will, they will have a special meeting on the eighth. Is that October eighth or six? Okay, okay. Sorry about that. I should have been more prepared. But they're going to have that special this meeting to, to discuss potential marijuana considerations. As it pertains to zoning. And then they elected their officers, which were, there was no change in their officers. Those folks will roll forward based on the election of the planning commission. Um, let's see, East Lake Street, we are almost to the finish line. So the latest update is concrete curb and sidewalk have been complete, base courses down. Top course is paving, will be paved by mid next week, weather dependent, obviously. All utility work is in place and complete and we're working through final cleanup and punch list items. As we speak. So again, this has been a busy summer for, for Mike and Jason and their crews. So kudos to them. I, I think it, as you can see by the next slide. Really looks, looks nice. Obviously, it's not a hundred percent complete. The, the final wearing course will go down soon. And, but this is a wonderful project to be completed. It'll be a nice addition to our community in this area. So we're excited to kind of put the finishing touch on this project. So again, thanks, Mike and Jason and crew for a wonderful project. So I'm going to, going forward, you're going to see this slide, something that I value. Because obviously I value our staff that work very hard and diligently. So some of these names you might not know completely and I'm getting to know them as well. So what's that? And actually Becky's birthday is today. So Becky is in the audience. Sorry. You tried to skate through, didn't you? So Al and Zach actually shared birthday last week, the twelfth. Becky's obviously today, Carl Fritz in public safety, Todd Trowell in public safety. And then Jordan Rea in water and wastewater coming up with September birthdays for staff. And then work anniversaries, Nicole Stradling coming up on one year. Pamela Potter downtown, five years, Jody Haven Library, eight years. And Cheryl in Greenwell, twenty-five years. So again, this is something I'm going to do each month going forward. So you can maybe get to know some names and, and celebrate with me as we honor our staff. And certainly give them a little pat on the back. So yesterday, or Saturday, I was able to participate in a solar tour with council member Walker. I didn't go on the tour with her, but I was here at city hall and welcomed this group of about, we have about twenty or so. Maybe fifteen or twenty that participated in the solar tour and looked at. Was there ten places, one, two, three, four, five, six, about ten locations that they went around town to look at installations. Past installations of solar. And then they're looking to do a community buy as well going forward. And so we had a good discussion on opportunities to further talk. Sustainability efforts of the city overall, what that looks like, where we're at, where we're hopefully headed with our action plan. Obviously, we've, we've certainly accomplished quite a bit in a short time, but we certainly have a, a ways to go. So it was good, good to talk solar and was, is a good, healthy discussion, good Q and A. And, and good experts in the room to answer questions as well. I don't know, Commissioner, if you wanted to chime in at this point? Wanted to give you a brief update. We are undergoing our citizens academy. We're about three weeks in or so. We have a full, full group of sixteen individuals that signed up, so they meet. On Wednesdays during, during this six-week period. So a good discussion. Matt's very pleased with the group. They're very engaged in, in getting to know. Public safety. So certainly something that we want to continue to promote for our residents to take advantage of going forward. Wanted to talk a little bit about Solanus Park. This is the conceptual plan. That, that we're working off of, obviously looking at connectivity. Providing more access to our shoreline from an ADA standpoint. So we've been doing, our contractor's been doing some concrete work back in this area. Preparing for the boardwalk that will kind of connect the two deck areas. So that the trail has actually been, the detour has been removed. The trail section is back open in this area. So we're, we're working to now put the boardwalk in and there'll be a, a mat that will be installed. On the shoreline to allow for wheelchair access as well. So we're, this will be a nice improvement, a nice area for residents and visitors to enjoy. Get to really get up close and personal to the shoreline, which this will be a great addition to our, to our city. I think that's it for my comments. Any questions for me at this time?
Questions, comments? Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Shane. Peter report. I did have a couple of questions. The first one was, you had made reference to the. Planning Commission and the meeting as of last week. And you said there was a four to three split in the vote. So the vote was actually to not permit three stories. And to remain at the two stories.
Yes, I'm sorry if I was not clear. It was a four to three, not to increase the height.
Okay, so the vote that was put on the floor was to deny the request.
Yes.
Okay. And then my second question was, you had referred to a special meeting with the planning commission in regards to. Marijuana facilities. Now, this is the current medical marijuana facilities, not any proposed future legislation. Or approval or language around a future recreational approval.
I think the intent is to look at. And we don't know, obviously, how the ballot initiative is going to move forward, how that, that, that is going to be up to the voters to decide that. But we want to at least start the dialogue for recreational from a zoning standpoint, looking at parking. And anything else that, that may need to be considered as, as that initiative. Moves, potentially moves ahead.
Thank you.
And you can give me feedback if you.
Well, I can give you any feedback because I believe what we had discussed was discussed in a closed session meeting. So I don't know. How to move forward with that?
Mr. Moore?
Well, I wasn't in the closed session because I was home with COVID, so I do have a question. So I'm assuming that in conjunction with that special meeting and the thinking, trying to be proactive about. Should that initiative pass, that that would be done along with the advice of council as far as parameters permitted. Given the, the wording of that, that initiative. Was that clear as mud or? Should I try again?
You might want to try it again, I guess. So I'm clear.
Okay, are we going to have, is the planning council going to act with the advice of council? If they're working proactively to consider, you know, this potential idea of marijuana and retail. Medical and, and retail being together?
So at this point, it's a discussion. It's, it's, there's two ways to obviously go about this. If I've. Interpreted our discussions wrongly, certainly I can be corrected on that. One school of thought is, do, do you, do you wait until the election comes and goes and then you shift and pivot? Or do you be a little proactive? And we do, we do, we do have time. This, this is not, this is not going to happen. Election day is what? It's eighth, Septak physical day. So on November ninth, whatever happens. There's not going to be a change that anybody's going to see necessarily. This is a process. We have. Things written in our current ordinance that prevents this transition to happen right away. So we do have some time. However, some of these things are going to take some time to, to work through. And so certainly I will value your feedback on how you. Um, some of these things are going to take some time to, to work through, and so certainly I will value your feedback on how you want to. Direct me, um but trying to be a little bit uh proactive without. Certainly, we're not going to um promote any sort of vote one way or another, that's not what we're trying to accomplish here. At all, it's just trying to get ahead of potential changes that may occur. If, if the desire of council is to hit pause and just wait it out, then certainly we will take that input.
Mr. Wagner? Thank you, Mayor, two things, Shane, so, so one was in the open meeting that we had on that topic, I know I said at least. Then with three facilities, medical facilities in my ward and the planning commission meetings that I attended. But everything in those meetings leading up to medical um dispensaries was focused on medical dispensaries and there were deep studies done. And comparisons with Traverse City and so on, that led to forest parking spaces be enough to home delivery. And so I, I suggested there could be differences in recreational. I, if recreational gets voted down, we obviously don't need the work, and I, I think. I think that's where that came from, if I remember right, the, the second thing, Shane, I'm, I'm curious, I, I know there was some discussion about the building height for the hotels. Making sure that we had, we gave neighbors a good chance to. Speak up, and it sounds like we had a good turnout, which we haven't had on a lot of things, any idea why, uh what efforts were made to. Involve or inform um the neighbors in that area, I think, in my ward. That uh that was a topic of discussion.
Yeah, just, just trying to get the word out, we obviously had some press coverage um on it as well, um. Got the word out through our website and social media as well, just to alert folks that this discussion was happening. And I guess people listened in and were concerned about it, there's a lot of folks that came out concerned about. Uh, visibility and, and the panoramic views that we get to enjoy as we come down the road, the, the main road. And uh certainly, that's a, that's a big part of, of, of what we have here and what we all enjoy here. And so that was a point of discussion about how that potentially impacts it, there was discussion about. Um, what that, what a three-story unit potentially would look like there as it's sat on. Uh, a certain site, um what, how that view, how that changes our view, unfortunately, we don't have the ability to. Pull up that type of um view without some, probably a consultant helping us kind of do sort of a. Um, a viewpoint or vantage, vantage point, given the elevations and showing what that could potentially look like. But that's certainly something that we could explore if that wanted, if you wanted more discussion on this particular topic uh as we move ahead.
I'd like more discussion on that, I, I feel it's an important issue, uh. I think it's something that could be re- explored by city council, possibly if there are ideas, send it back to the planning commission with some ideas. I think it's very important to be open to development. With the understanding that we are also trying to protect neighbors and, and the neighborhoods as well. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor, and I wanted to comment on that as well, um thank you, Mr. Horn, for your, your presentation, uh the. And I understand if uh a, at the planning commission, if it uh proposal, it gets voted down, so it's fourth week. It does not go to council for a discussion, doesn't go to council as a no, no recommendation, just doesn't come to council. So I, I think that's correct. That's, that's the, so next step for council to have that discussion. Um, if, you know, we think it's in the best interest of the community, it's aligned as a uh consistent master plan. And you know, this, we have a stated goal, trying to be more development friendly, uh and you know, in a. Uh, when people come out, a lot of times it's in opposition of something that doesn't necessarily represent the community, so I agree with you, Mayor. I, I was gonna, in my uh council comments, and I was gonna ask council if we could look at. Uh, as we can as a body, uh legislate and bring a ordinance to. Uh, to the, uh, to initiate an ordinance process, and who could actually just take this same ordinance, initiate it. Bring it, and I would have to go back to the planning commission, but that, even if they voted no, as I understand, in that case, because we initiated it. It would then come to us and we could then uh open it up to the whole community again uh before the council.
I would like, I would like city staff. Uh, to take a closer look at it on zoning, to take a look at. Processes, setbacks, I, I think there's a lot of things that could be looked at by staff. They got a lot of, I'm sure, feedback from the neighbors that did attend, and I think it would be who of us to. Take a look at, have staff look at it, get back to city council with that, so we can then decide where we want to go with it. I'm not really in favor of overriding ordinance, writing ordinances up here.
That's that, yeah, that is, that is our, our job to legislate, so this is an opportunity to. I mean, we've talked about this a lot, I just, I'm just would be curious, you know, asking the body, is, is this something we want to do? And take this opportunity, this, this is a great opportunity to put this in practice, uh but if it's not. And I just, I'm on, I'm on both, so uh I'm, I'm curious what, what council body is saying on this one. And, and Mayor, I hear you saying there's, there's potential feedback from that meeting that could, you know, that could advise this ordinance. And I, I supported that, I just think that the, this could, you know, that could delay it, and we have an ordinance that's in place that. That I, I think the planning commissioner didn't, did that and had, gave his opinion on. So I'd be, I'd be curious to look, have, have that same ordinance come to council even next meeting. And, and have us look at it then there, and then if we, if we as a council body say no, we need to have more time on this as well, that's, that's totally fine. But I, I would love to see it in that, at the next meeting.
There's, there's a process there, it isn't like you just bring an ordinance to city council, we vote on it. There's a first reading, second reading, public hearing, there's a, a whole factor involved with it. So this isn't something, next meeting, we're going to determine, well, this is now three stories or two stories or five stories, one. Ms. Walker?
Thanks, Mayor, um I just think to kind of support maybe a little bit of what um I hear Derek saying is that. In our last uh group meeting with both the planning commission and the city council, our legal counsel gave us. Very clear instruction of what was in our legal realm as policy creators for the city of Petoskey. How we can handle zoning and ordinance, and this would be one opportunity to kind of exercise that activity, because. There is, and, and I would be very curious to know historically what policies and. City council has actually created in the last decade, because um obviously that is within the realm of what our roles are as elected officials, so. Um, and in, in regards to that, holding um special meetings where you're taking extra human capital. And obviously, city um taxpayer money as well is something to be weighed and evaluated on as needed basis. And holding special meetings in regards to a piece of legislation that is going to go before the voters in November. I think is premature, and I've been pretty vocal about not expending either. Um, tax-based capital, or in this context, human capital volunteers that are, you know, giving their man-hours to this subject. I don't think that's a proper use of our time, and there's a. Numerous things that the city council and the planning commission and the planning commission itself could be working on. In regards to affordable housing and these ordinances and the long list of advised policies and. Ordinances we could be implementing in terms of zoning that I believe are a better use of our capital and time. And I think that kind of encompasses my feelings about this special meeting that's being held about recreational cannabis, which is not even policy. In the city of Petoskey, I think it's premature, um. And I feel really strongly about special meetings being of really good use of time and um productive meetings, so. Um, I would just like to say that in addition to what Derek is suggesting, which was the last topic of our special meeting held between city council. And the planning commission, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Moore?
Well, just briefly, as a point of clarification, uh I guess I respectfully disagree. On the importance of being proactive about the marijuana issue, uh I think it is important from a legal perspective. Particularly in terms of what Matt Cross advised us at the open meeting, is that there are clear parameters. Or maybe clear parameters of, around what we can and cannot do. And I do think being proactive on that is very important, and that was really what I was trying to get at in my inartful question to um Shane. That there be legal counsel around trying to be proactive on that issue, and I do think it's important, respectfully.
Anything else on your? City mayor's update, that anybody has any questions about, I'd like to say thank you to Mike Robbins, to Mr. Fate, to his whole crew. Um, I know this is a long time coming with Lake Street, we've heard people come to city council meetings at least two or three years in a row. That it was pushed back due to the possibility of getting grant money as well as labor, uh. Things to do sequential on it, and I, I think, I, I, I would hope that every resident up there is very happy with what you guys in the city has done. As a whole, so thank you. Next. Our appointments, the consideration appointment to the election commission. First one is uh Sarah Beck. She's our city clerk, she is, is replacing, she's replacing Al Terry, eighteen, who was the uh. Who, I gotta find my page here, who was the uh clerk. And so I'm asking you for, to uh support the uh appointment of Sarah Clerk as city. Uh, Sarah Beck as city clerk to fill the vacancy, uh and I'm asking for a motion.
Support?
A motion from Mr. Shields and check it from Mr. Moore, any other discussion? I go to city clerk Beck for role.
Shields?
Yes.
Demore, aye, Wagner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you.
Next is the planning commission, I'm bringing forward a reappointment of Caroline, Carolyn uh Dittmer. Caroline, Carolyn is uh. Served it well, I've heard good comments that she participates, uh. She served two years to fill out a vacancy, it takes a year just to get feeling good that you know what's going on. Her second year, I, I understand was much better as far as participation and being involved, and that's what we hope for those people that are on our boards. So I'm bringing to you her name, she lives at uh six nineteen Michigan Street.
Support?
I have a motion from Ms. Walker and a second from Mr. Moore. To appoint Carolyn Dittmeyer, and I take it to. City clerk Beck for role.
Walker?
Yes.
Demore, aye, Shields?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes. Last on it is the zoning board of appeals, it's a reappointment of Robert S. Morris. He's uh was on Lockwood Avenue uh for a three-year term that would end April two thousand and twenty-five. He uh was their alternate uh for quite a long time. Um, and I think his experience on that board has helped, been helpful. Comments, uh and I ask that you support him, he's uh involved with the uh. He's been involved with other things such as J C's uh Camp Daggett, uh things such as that in the past. So I'm taking his name and bringing it forward to you, Mr. Rock, uh Mr. Wagner.
Motion to approve.
Okay, simply, I have a motion from Mr. Wagner and a second from Mr. Moore, any other comments? I go to city clerk Beck for role.
Wagner?
Yes.
Demore, aye, Shields?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes. Now we're onto new business. This was probably our longest. Assignment to take over over right now, and I'm glad it's not me having to do it. Uh, this is the receipt and introduction and the first discussion uh of the city's proposed two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-eight. Capital improvement plan, I'm gonna turn it over to city manager Shane Horn for his background of it.
So, so my uh. The committee that I left was on a uh July one, June thirty fiscal year, so. Before I had left, I had just gone through this whole budgeting process. And then I arrived here and, and guess what, we get to start the budgeting process, I feel like I've been budgeting for a long time.
But on the wind because of your experience.
That's right, absolutely. So, obviously, our budget is, is composed of two main components, capital improvement uh projects. Capital improvement plan and then operating as well, so a capital improvement plan, otherwise known as the C I P. Is really a planning and fiscal management tool, um. And it's important to hu- underline the word plan, um as we all know, things change that are outside of our control. You know, worldwide pandemics happen, um other things, uh you know, interest rates going crazy, inflation. And such, so a plan is always uh subject to, to change and uh. And so we have to understand and, and, and kind of shift on the fly sometimes. But this gives us, I believe, a good roadmap as we look forward, um. Uh, over the next six years, so this helps us coordinate locations, timing, financing of capital. Uh, improvements over this six-year look ahead, if you will. So capital improvements could be defined as major non-recurring physical expenditures such as land, buildings, public infrastructure. And equipment, um again, the C I P assists us as we put, uh as we look at our strategic planning efforts. As we look at the priorities within our master plan. Um, these all should, a- as these projects move forward, as, as planning commissioners, as city council members. We should all be going back to, how does any one of these projects um support? And uh address our priorities um as we, as we look at our master plan, as we look at our action plan. So capital expenditure could be considered anything greater than three years of useful life. Anything greater than twenty-five thousand dollars from a project standpoint, or greater than ten thousand dollars from an equipment. Uh, vehicles or material standpoint. So we have a lot of, a number of slides to go through, and I'll try to not dwell on any one. We have a couple subject matter experts in the room that if you have questions, Kendall is here from the parks uh department. Obviously, Mike is here and will chime in on his um. Projects as well as, as questions come up, overall sixty-seven point five million over the six-year uh C I P uh plan. Five point three million in twenty twenty-three, with seven hundred and ten thousand of that coming um in the general fund. I will, I will pause here and say, um, we don't have that level of revenue. For, to support that amount of general fund capital, so there will be, there will be further tweaks to this, um. As we look at our revenue, um that can support this, we're about four hundred thousand dollars from a revenue standpoint. Which means either we take the, the extra three hundred thousand out of reserves, which is certainly in the purview of council. We could consider, um which may come up uh at some point, as I've talked to others, we could look at ARPA resources as well. To support that, that gap, um looking at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in grants or outside a revenue source. So we're continuing to scour and look for any and, and all grant opportunities to support our efforts. Uh, planning commission did recommend approval uh um on August eighteenth uh at their August meeting. So just the breakdown of um where our capital expenditures by fund are going, as you can see. Um, you know, twenty-four percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-two percent are coming from um streets, electric and water and sewer. So our enterprise funds take up a, really a, the biggest majority of, of capital projects um supported through. Through their rate structures uh to be able to do the wonderful things that you see in and around our community, undergrounding. Uh, utilities from the electric side and then making sure as we do a street project that we're also addressing any water and sewer needs. As associated with that particular street. Um, and then you can see again, the, the breakdown uh of expenditures um by, by fund. Um, kind of graphically as well, uh looking at uh that, yeah, that's fine, you can keep, you know, you're good, keep me on, on. Moving forward, so I can get, so looking at uh parks and special facilities, um six twenty Ingalls Avenue. So looking at Parks and Special Facilities, six twenty Ingalls Avenue, this has been something that we've had in the budget for the last few years. I I have gone with staff to put my eyes on this and go actually go inside. This is the former historical. What was it used for?
History museum.
History museum, thank you, storage. I and you, I'll show you a few slides picture wise going forward, but the house is in very bad repair. Yeah, I can see that. So you can see the it's got a built-in skylight currently. Yeah, so it's got some significant structural challenges. I I would be shocked if it lasts the winter season. And so we have proposed to 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 knock it down, clean the site up. We have even. Talked with Habitat. They are interested in potentially coming alongside us and and helping us check a box for. Affordable housing after that site has been cleared. See if you want to go back one. Yep, thank you. Also with Parks, Washington Park, we've got some access engineering that we want to complete there, looking at right now has some limited parking. Taking place really primarily on the streets. So looking at some options there on how we can reimagine that park, that neighborhood park. And then Winter Sports Park. It's like my formatting got off a little bit, but where sports park, the roof and interior renovations are in the C I P currently. To address some, this facility is is thirty-three years old. Certainly gets, it's well-loved, it's well-used, and you can see that by some of the pictures that you'll see going forward. But also I want to make sure that we're continuing to reinvest in the real way as we look at resurfacing projects. Certainly, as as asphalt ages, we it. It starts to fall apart and we get pumps in the asphalt and we get. Things that are growing up through it that you really shouldn't have from from that standpoint. So we need to make sure that we're reinvesting in. And that beautiful resource, that community treasure that we all enjoy. So that's just ongoing resurfacing, continuing. I'm looking at Kendall from west to east. Is that, or am I got that backwards?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
The last two projects have started in West Park. That trail then.
East, yeah, okay. So that's general, coming out of generals. We also have a few TIFF projects that we're proposing or arboretum conversion. Again, there there'll be some supporting pictures, looking at reconfiguring the current. Wheelway, restoring the area with native shoreline plants. That will also kind of move the actual wheelway slightly away from the shoreline. And then it would kind of match up the concrete on either end of this section as well. So we're we're concrete through this area. As part of that project, and again, we'll we'll have some pictures going forward. The pedestrian bridge right outside City Hall, if you've walked across it recently, it's in need of some new decking. So that's in the the C I P, as well as the Mitchell Street improvements, which will. This is kind of a combined effort of staff within TIFF, within Mike's group with with streets and. And engineering and and electric departments. Looking at how we can kind of open up that corridor as you come off thirty-one, and so we'll look at that as well. So this is a combined, we have several buckets that we're looking to utilize to make those improvements in that section as well. Go flip through. So these are some pictures from the Winter Sports Park, looking at the roof. Again, this facility is about thirty-three years old. I don't know if this is original roof or not, but it likely is. So it's it's in need of some some attention as we look at. You know, the Winter Sports Park and making sure that it's a continues to be a usable facility as we move ahead. Looking at windows and doors as well. Again, it's it's well utilized, well loved, gets a lot of attention, and we just need to make sure that we're. Committed to this investment that we all enjoy. So look at wheelway resurfacing. You can see these are things that you don't really want in coming up through your asphalt when you see greened. Green materials coming up through. That's probably a sign that we need to. Address a section. So you can see where we left off to the picture all the way to the right. So this would continue. The resurfacing as we move east through the city. So this is the Bayfront Arboretum. Again, looking at native plants, looking at making sure that we're protecting the shoreline with native plants. And again, we would be shifting the the actual wheelway slightly off the the shoreline. Making the connections between the this would all be again, concrete from where we left off at the restroom facility. And then connecting kind of behind the. Get the lay of the land there. Is that behind the Kilwens facility or just passed? Okay. So this is the pedestrian bridge right up right behind City Hall that we're talking about, the redecking project, making sure that we're addressing. That and and making sure that we're protecting that investment as well. So public safety. Matt and his group have some some projects that they'd like to address, doing some painting work in their apparatus room where we store our our main equipment. Looking at our radiant heat tube, replacing that infrastructure to make sure that we have everything in place and it's functioning. At highest efficiency possible. And then looking at our kitchen. So this was looking at the apparatus room, painting the walls, kind of freshening up the the facility, if you will. And you can kind of look at the radiant heat tubes as well. I don't know what the age of that is, but I can certainly get that to you. Just make sure that again that we're. Trying to be as efficient as possible in how we're 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 heating and and from a level of comfort that we provide to our staff. And and looking at any and all options to improve that. And then kitchen, these are kind of original cabinets, counters, countertops, facilities for our staff that. Again, well-used, it it really functions well for our staff, and we want to make sure that we're looking at any and all opportunities to to reinvest in. And make sure that we're taking care of that investment. So streets and drainage, a number of projects. This is compared to probably this year. It's a little bit of a slower year. I'm looking at, Mike will probably say, nah, not really, probably, but. So we'll have some miscellaneous pavement preservation and repair, you know, as needed as we get. Projects that come forward, if we get, you know, water main breaks and and such, that patches that we'll need to put back in place. We always want to make sure that we have resources in place to be able to do those those sort of projects. So Bridge Street is a project that will get done next year from Franklin Street to the bridge. And you can see the the dollar estimates that we've got earmarked for those as well as. Again, this is a a combination project with a couple other buckets that we'll use. This is the Mitchell Street section. And then I'll show you of some pictures of what that conceptually looks like and what we're we would like to do there. This is obviously also in combination with the D M B. This is initiative that they've really pushed out and have been leading. The effort into to making this improvement. We think it'll kind of open up that corridor as we make that turn. Miscellaneous sidewalk construction replacement, continuing to invest in connectivity and making sure that we're we have sidewalks that. Don't pose any sort of trip hazards or eliminate or try to eliminate those hazard as much as possible. So making sure that we're reinvesting and replacing sidewalks that are in need of replacement. And then looking at Washington Park, again, ax doing some access engineering, again, a combined effort to really look at that neighborhood park. So this is Bridge Street, again Franklin Street to the bridge, can kind of see some current conditions. Of the of the road, of the sidewalk, of the drive approaches through this section. These are the Millenfeld Spot Repairs. This is the intersection of Porter and Main. Porter Street between U S one thirty-one and Curtis. And then the Porter Street Bridge Intersection. This this came up and I believe it was the Ward Conventions. That was a question that came up as far as the. Pedestrian safety of this intersection. So Mike and his group will be looking at that as this project is is explored and and engineered and designed. How can we make this a more pedestrian-friendly intersection as we move ahead? So the Mitchell Street Downtown Gateway, this is kind of a. A project that we've been working on with Beckett and Raider and and Kendall's been and leading that as well. And Zach and and Mike and his group and and Becky and D M B. This is again, there's a lot of eyes on this, a lot of effort to. Really reimagine what this corridor could look like as we come off one thirty-one onto. Onto Mitchell, kind of as we make that turn, how that opens up that corridor and kind of gets that that awe. Look as we all enjoy as we come down the hill, looking at the bay. We want that same awe to look to to be in people's eyes when they turn and look at downtown. Right now, as you look at that, and I should have took a or should have put a current view picture on here, but. We have a group of pretty large evergreens that have really taken over. There's a sign. That you can't even tell. I forgot what even the sign says. Does it say down downtown Potaski? You probably don't even notice that it's there. It's just overgrown with 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 trees. So eliminating, getting the trees done, reimagining that planter area. Lining up or adding some some additional lighting, lining them up with the current lighting system that that. Flows through downtown. So again, as you as you make the bend here and you have that first view of downtown, it's it's open, it's consistent. It's. Again, people have that same awe that they see when they look at the bay. Is kind of what we're what we're going after here. So again, this is a a combination of funds from D M B, from electric, from. From streets, from Kendall and Parks. So looking at what this could look like. To open up that corridor a little bit more so we can take advantage of the well, the beauty that we have in downtown. So electric, again, electric follows a lot of our street projects. The Mitchell Street corridor from, again, what we just talked about, from thirty-one to Emmett Street. Again, Michigan Street, looking at the residential conversion project. And then Grand Avenue as well, a conversion project as part of that as well. So looking at some electric improvements, this is Fairview Avenue between Grand and North Grand. And then Michigan Street between Lockwood and Waukesha. As as those are the projects we're looking at from an electric improvement standpoint. The intersection of Porter and Maple Streets, again, talking about electric improvements and then the bridge between Franklin and and Bridge. So this would be part of the. Construction project in this corridor. And then also we want to make sure that we're reinvesting in our current infrastructure. So looking at. Some upgrades to or improvements to our substation. So there's some some dollars in there for that as well. So looking at water and sewer, some miscellaneous water main spot repairs. Obviously, we do a lot of things that are outside of our control that are underground. We were, we have water main breaks. Unfortunately, things happen, and so we we have funds in the in the budget to to make these repairs. As as things happen. Unfortunately, they don't happen from eight to five typically. There they. We were on onsite over the weekend on a couple projects that weren't anticipated. So our guys are 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 right after it. So again, Bridge Street, the Emmett Street Project as well, from East Mitchell to Michigan. Looking at installing some. Generator at our Ingalls Pump Street Station as well. And then always looking at. How we make sure that we monitor and apply and and meet all of our letting copper rule. Requirements. That is a continual commitment that we're making as we come across in. In our projects, any sort of letting copper issues that we come across, we're addressing those as we come across those in construction projects. And then sewer continues. Obviously, again, anytime we do a a street project, we're looking at our underground work as well. So that we have funds in there for miscellaneous repairs and then our our two. Projects that we've already talked about, making sure that we're continuing to invest in. Certainly, we don't want to. Do road work and then. Figure out that we have a water or sewer issue after that fact, that that is not a good use of our our resources. So we want to be proactive, not reactive to those situations. So a number of motor pool things, we want to make sure that we're continuing to invest in our vehicles. In many cases, we are replacing older facility, older equipment with newer, more modern, more. Efficient vehicles. We do have an E V. Vehicle that we'd like to replace. This would be a staff vehicle, a pool vehicle that we would replace. So I won't go through this. I won't read this, but you can see what we're what we're trying to accomplish by replacing some of our older. Model vehicles with obviously newer, more efficient vehicles, and this will be obviously a continual investment as we move move forward. So that's the overall C I P. Again, this is, this is a plan, and this is part of our process that will. Kind of marry the operating budget together. Once you have that likely in November. Again, I have, Mike is here, Kendall is here. Any specific questions for them, for their related projects? They're certainly here to entertain any questions you may have at this point.
Council, do you have any questions for? City manager or staff that's here, Miss Walker.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Shane, for your presentation. Do you, can you remind me where Fairview and Grand and East Grand avenues are located? Hell, hell. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anybody else with a comment? Miss Demore.
Mike, I know I asked you this question at our work session, but I just think it's helpful. I get the question a lot of times about how we decide what. Street's going to be next. So if you wouldn't mind just briefly explaining how that happens.
Sure. The 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 street systems, we have local and major streets. And some of the streets have grant funding that are that is available at certain times. And and what we do with all of our streets is we do a Pacer rating. So the the Pacer rating rates the street. And tells us what the condition of that street is. And then we separate the Pacer ratings for streets that are eligible for grant funding, as I had stated. And then we can look at the city as an overall. Comprehensive look at what streets are failing. And there's streets you may not go down or get into these deep residential neighborhoods. But the Pacer rating map shows us what those streets are. And and it's it's pretty amazing on what a rough winter will do to that Pacer rating. Jason Fate, who does the ratings, has already commented on last winter's free stall. Lots of pot holeing, but that gives us an idea of what direction we're headed.
Thank you.
Mr. Shields.
Peter. A good question on materials. I understand that you're working with finite budgets, and so you're you're you're. Going to see materials that do the job, but. I'm wondering specifically with the the roof at the Winter Sports Park concessions building. Or the the decking material. Are are you looking, you consider pricing options for a mo, something that would be longer lasting? And also the decking, like the composite decking that could also last longer. I understand this would be a higher price point.
So what, how I will write those specs is with our with old. If you recall, we. Wrote the specifications for the festival area shelter, which should be done at this ball. We did put, wrote the specs for the sandy metal seat roof. Um we did put, we wrote the specs for the sandy metal seam roof. Uh like we have at Mitchell Street and some of the other uh newer uh shelters. And we only had uh for single roof as an option, we've always allowed the voluntary options of things that. You know, I mean, I know, so there and and the same thing will be done with with other materials.
Okay.
With other areas, that can, you know, wood composite. Uh so we, we allow.
Okay, and then uh based on the bids that come back, you you can compare apples to apples on.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council? Say what in the public wish to speak to council? Go ahead, sure, sure, Mr. Shields.
If, so I I've had a a work to resident who's um made me aware of some issues with. Wires coming down pr- pr- uh providing safety hazards on Carlton Street. And so um I don't know the process of, you know, you know, function for uh moving Carlton Street up the. Up the ladder and the ranking of undergrounding wires. Um I've also had the same thing with Windell, but I wasn't sure if Windell, maybe that was, it was Windell from Kalamazoo to. To the east, so the end of the court there. Um so and Carlton from Wakazoo to Howard, uh both had, both had incidents where a wire, I think one truck hit a wire, knocked it down. Another Carlton, not sure that it's how that happened, but a a wire was on the ground. So clearly, those are, uh I I hear that, oh, I'm gonna start with priority of moving those up and the, undergrounding those wires.
It's nice that you uh stand up for your ward. That's good, that's good. Anybody, anybody else have one that they wish to mention with their? Anything else? Does the public wish to weigh in on to talk to city council regarding this two thousand twenty-three uh capital improvement plan? Sir, come on down.
Uh Jennifer, I'm an eight-year-old bachelor in Ward four. And uh just briefly, uh one of the items with Washington Park Access Engineering. Uh I saw two different figures up there, one was in one slide ten thousand and another slide it was one thousand. Uh so whatever gets the job done, um I hope they uh go the lesser expensive. Uh one that gets, it's just the best option at a minimum. Uh I'd love to see us get trash receptacles and benches and still kind of call it apart. Um because right now those uh amenities don't exist. So um uh for East Mitchell uh at Emmett, um sidewalk work. Uh the picture that was shown, uh shows some beautiful new lighting up at twenty-five feet above the walking surface. And uh considering that that's a sidewalk on the street, um I'd like to think that maybe you could put pedestals. Uh that complement on the light poles, so the street lighting uh down here that will make walking path. Not causing light, which shouldn't for everybody who's driving into town and can't see that there's stools that. Project lighting all over the place. I guess I'm a little confused as to the East Mitchell at Emmett. We instruction, it looked in the picture that you had there, we're looking once again. Uh narrow the quotes of our intersections for pedestrian safety. But I tell you, it's the school buses and the semi trucks that are delivering merchandise and children. In this town cannot get around these streets, they can't turn, if there's a car in the way. Even if it's not on the double yellow line. I live on Baxter Street, school buses are forced to come down, uh not on arterial roads. But on side streets because they can't make turns uh that they normally do on these narrow, narrower streets like Emmett. To get back to the bus yard, and so they're coming up those street and Baxter Street, Oak and Bridge Street. Instead of using main road, but they can't make those turns. Um I think they had one other vote. And then just to go uh. With the development on both sides of Emmett, um that little seven eleven and video there. Um I those, just for my upper that I don't know, I was moving forward, did that lie to see being done or?
Good question.
I remember back in the day of uh Potash Point. That all that eating that go down Potash Point would be done. But wait, wait to do all that work until all the construction work was done and sidewalks were drafted. And trees and lawns and curbs of the facility for the construction of newer things, but we parked for the woods. On uh, you know, there's four hundred block and everybody, or we set for their home, four hundred and.
Okay.
I guess one worth commenting on would be, uh city manager, would you? What is the process, progress on the uh Mr. Burgs?
At this time, there's nothing um, nothing percolating there. We believe that this improvement needs to happen and we need to be proactive and make the improvements. Happen, we can't predict when that project's gonna get off the ground. Um so it's our recommendation to move ahead, get the improvements completed. Obviously, it'll be up to the developer uh to protect um that corridor. If and when that project happens and if it's, and if it's damaged or um impacted in any way, they'll have to, to put it back. So either we, either we sit on our hands and wait for someone to to uh to do the that project. Or we clean up an area that we believe could make a significant uh impact, positive impact as it, as we make that turn.
And that place is on a sunset clause as far as how long they have for permit for that one, is it?
That I don't know.
I know it is. So they'll have to come back if it has not started or. Initiated, then they would come back to the planning commission, Mr. Moore.
Can I just follow up on Mr. Grantham's observation about the narrowing of the entry to Mitchell? I didn't observe that, so can somebody tell me is that?
We can go back to that slide for you, please.
They clear the comment was that the narrowing appeared the narrow Emmett, not necessarily.
Thanks for the clarification.
But let's take a look at it so that everybody's.
That was in the C I P.
What she's doing at every project that is okayed by the planning commission comes to city council. Is it has a a deadline of a a process where it has to be started, it has to be a certain amount of time. And most of them are eighteen months. I think this one is an eighteen month, and I think it was done about uh just under a year ago.
Yes.
That one.
Want to talk about that? So I can give a brief summary of some of the history here. Um the project with the weed alignment of the sidewalk. Um north of the Video Club Building is, is this almost kind of a separate project than the narrowing of Emmett Street. So in the C I P, the, if both developments were to go at the seven eleven property and the Video Club. We would need to install new water main there, we put new water main in Emmett Street um to. Michigan, we did some improvements and then we've wrapped the East Mitchell area with new water main installed. So I thought was that per the C I P, you'll notice that in the water that we're going to install that water main. Most likely only if there's movement on those two properties or at least one of the properties. And when with those properties were being looked at, and I believe the plan, planning commission looked at those properties or when they were approving them. There was a comment made of creating a loading, unloading area in front of those because it was going to be some residential placed. So Emmett Street currently is three lanes. And it would be reduced to two to create the loading, unloading zone in front of, you know, to the. East of the Video Club and west of the, what was proposed at the seven eleven. I don't remember how many units residential were in the Video Club, but the thought was if they had to go down the alley. To access the building with no on-street parking, then they would exit. Going to Elizabeth Street, which would be putting them into a resi- uh residential neighborhood. So I wasn't fully involved in that, Amy Tweet and the city planner previously was um working on that. But that's, that's why that is narrowed, shown as being narrowed.
Is it enough room for a semi coming down Emmett Street, turning to the right?
That has been looked at, yeah, there are, there is a turning movement there that that would be looked at. Final engineering has not even occurred on this yet because there's no movement on either property. But the thought is if it did, now the developer um would have to replace the curb um along Emmett Street at the Video Club. And because it's all dubbed down this driveway. So when we meet with, with the developer on those types of projects, there'll be some participation from the developer as well as the city. From the utility side.
Other questions, council? Mr. Shields.
The uh arborium conversion, that slide go up again, I was, I guess I was a little unclear with the path change. Everybody else got that?
But now, I have some questions about that.
And I, thank you. Uh yeah.
Okay, so this is, this is the current as was. Um overlay, well, and so what we, if you recall a few years ago, we had the high water. We had to, we we hit sanitary sewer right, right, right up there. And we basically dissected the park. Um in the middle and it, it then tapered into by the, by the mine. So because of what we experienced with the high water. What I would like to do is meander that trail. Maybe thirty feet inward to get it off the shoreline. Um over that utility as it, as we have a lot of our other trails are over utility. Um and that will offer us quite a bit more protection uh in the, in in the future. We, we, I estimate in that, in that, on that stretch, there are areas where we lost. Fifteen to twenty-five feet of shoreline, uh the water will rise again. Um and we, with, with that, if we were planned on the water side. Well, in in the middle, we would have more pollinators. More of a natural mix, uh shoreline side, we would have native shoreline plantings to help that. The uh the banks from high water and wind rolling and overtopping. And then down the bottom side of the uh of the, the the south. Um the south side between the road and 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 the park, we would, um we would propose having a burning type area. These are all being three separate interpretive areas for people to use. But the intent of moving that trail off of the, off of the bluff is to prevent any future, future damage. Plus, we can connect a ten-foot wide concrete um at either end. So that whole stretch would be either end from, or basically bay view through. Um bayfront west part will all be a concrete pad.
Thanks for clarification.
Any else, council? Maybe in our dispublic wish to speak to council regarding. These updates. Twenty twenty-two. They're being on uh. Are you set? Okay.
Um is there something that we are supposed to suggest? I know there's no vote.
No.
But the approval of the C I P by resolution occurred the October third, twenty-two ninety-two, city council meeting?
Unless there's uh any desire that we need to reevaluate and and push that out further, that would be the intent.
So there's no need for like a recommendation for that to move forward practically, that there it just is, okay, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have the adoption of a proposed resolution. That would allow the city to continue participating in the clean energy programs with Franklin Energy LLC. Of Lansing for the years twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. That the existing customer services were late, and I'll turn that over to city manager Hor. I'm gonna deflect that to Mike uh as our representative.
I remember this discussion.
It's, it's on, yeah.
So in uh two thousand eight, um under Jennifer Grantham. Um signed the law as the Clean Renewable and Efficiency Energy Act. And that was commonly known as public act two ninety-five. And what this act mandates is that all the upgrade providers um implement an energy optimization. Um the thought being that if we could get the customers to using energy optimization plans. It would reduce energy usage. Um it would then in turn reduce what's required to run the building grid. So it had been successful, um it's been around since two thousand nine. Um the Public Service Commission was the overseer of the program. We would have to, we did this all through Michigan Public Power Agency, but we, they would quantify the yearly savings. Of the program, of the users. And it was uh Franklin Energy was then the um service provider of those incentive programs for us. Uh in two thousand sixteen, the act was amended. And they changed the energy optimization, same thought, same theory, but it was then referred to as the energy. Um and Waste Reduction Act. And it quantifies still everything that these programs would, you know, the end user. Um acquired some L E D lamps, lights from the city, they had a kilowatt usage that would be applied as goals. That Michigan Public Service Mission would then verify that we were hiding that law. Um Franklin Energy has been, you know, set this in two thousand nine. They've been with the agency offering um the programs to several municipal called the state. Electrical devices range from H A, H D A segments, L E D lamps. The commercial side, um air conditioners, heavy lighting, motion sensors. Get on the website, it's pages of incentives. And these contractors that are working for commercial, industrial uh customers. The residential program um is built around the same way, we've been customize it. Customer come to us and says, we have this project, it's not on your list, we put them in touch with Franklin Energy. They'll assist them on any energy savings that can be acquired by whatever they're installed. Customer service rates that we're, have been using since the start of the program are still in effect. And the residential is two tenths of a cent for a kilowatt. Um if you have five hundred kilowatt hour usage for the month, I save it in the memo at twelve ninety-one cents. State of Michigan claims that for every dollar that's spent on incentive, customer, there's four dollars avoided cost in savings. Uh we have nine hundred and thirty secondary commercial customers, they are billed at a flat rate. Six dollars and sixty-one cents and fifteen primary customers at eighty-eight dollars and twelve cents. Renewal of this energy waste reduction uh. Program, the city is looking to pursue and continue. Um did have a sunset clause in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. We elected to continue the program for another year. Now, Michigan Public Power Agency is asking to extend it for an additional three. Um, there are thirty-six out of forty municipal utilities. There's forty utilities in the state of Michigan. Thirty-six are currently enrolled. In Michigan Public Power Agency. Uh, there has been a force applicable side to this. Um. Energy waste reduction. Uh, even though we're not mandated, there had been some talk in Lansing. That there needs to be another energy bill rewrite. That would include the mandate that these programs exist. Um, the Michigan Municipal Electric Association and M D P A have elected to stay firm. And just the public power to offer these programs. Um, with approval, um, without oversight of the Michigan Public Service Commission. So our M M A board and its executive director follows the Lansing Legislative. Um, arena very closely. And has recommended that. Us and municipal and public power continue these programs. We do not have to be bored after December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. We can implement the programs as we see that. Um, Franklin Energy um does all the oversight for all the members. Uh, we're meeting um in regards to the next three years of what incentives we can. Create that would. Give us some more kilowatt savings. I will tell you that it will all may be approved and taken the LEDs. Although we give away a lot of LEDs today at Lance. Um, we have giveaways at the city hall offices here. We'll get to bring a couple of pallets. Of um, lighting kits. We'll get those out there, but all of that is quantified by Franklin. Um. And Michigan Public Power Agencies uh, looking to go after a three-year contract. They will hold a master agreement over the three years. I've asked the question, um, what if we want to change up the program or allocate different? Um. You know, programs and incentives for Bataski. And that is something we can do. They would like to keep the template uniform amongst the municipal members. So that if you're close proximity to a community, you're seeing the same type of offense. So we're asking the council. Who authorized? Us to participate in the clean energy program of the agency is probably. Three years, twenty-three one thousand.
Okay, Ms. Walker.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion. To adopt the proposed resolution that would allow the city to continue participating in the clean energy program with Franklin Energy LLC. Support.
Well, motion from Ms. Walker and a second from this Mr. DeMore. Any other discussions, counsel? I think it's very, I think it's a very good program. Uh. I think we should continue it as well, for sure. Mr. Mr. Moore.
Just as a point of clarification for anybody who may be listening, this is the rebate program too, right? Where if people buy energy efficient items, they can apply for rebates.
Correct.
Okay, and that comes at a cost only of point zero zero one eight two two one four. Per kilowatt of usage.
Correct.
Thank you.
Does the, do the public wish to weigh in on this? Possible motion? For being none, I go to the city clerk back for roll.
Walker?
Yes.
DeMore?
I.
Shields?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much, Mike, for looking out at the city's well-being on this stuff. Last on the agenda, of course, to be in last, is the adoption of a proposed resolution that would. Accept the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund project. Agreement for the Park Avenue sidewalk expansion and Pennsylvania Park. But then I'll turn it over to. Kendall. Direct Director, come on down.
So in uh, April of twenty twenty-one, I submitted a grant to the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Um. As part of the Park Avenue. Expansion of the sidewalk, the parallel, the backside of the building. Uh, to improve accessibility, to improve utilities. Um, and to give, you know, that creates more space. Uh, I think this is a great project. It's been a capital improvement plan for years and. Um. It wasn't originally budgeted to be uh, supported by by grants. So I'm, I'm saying that we were able to uh, get this project recommended. And I'm looking for your uh, your approval of entering project agreement with the. With President of Land and Water Conservation.
Counsel, do you, before we have a discussion, if we have a motion, then we can do the discussion that would be best possibly. Is there anybody that wants to make a motion? And Ms. Walker? Thank you, Ms. Walker. Second?
I'll second.
Mister Walker, Mister Wagner, sorry. I've got you two together and you're just. I'm gonna separate you two and help you out. Does any questions or comments that you wish to ask to Kendall at this point? Mr. Moore?
So with apologies, Kendall, because I'm the new kid on the block here, I really don't know the history of this. So just as a process question, like, was this? Drawing approved by city council, my colleagues, or? I mean, did they just approve the grant application, or how did this all kind of?
The, the entire corridor, Greenway corridor plan was approved uh, in twenty sixteen.
Okay.
Okay, and we, we chipped away at it over the last several years. And um. Different portions have been funded with different methods. Um, the south portion then goes from Mitchell Street to Emmett, where they uh, were the trust fund. Um, grants as well as the north end by McDonald to Bay Street. Um, but the, the land and water. Conservation fund is a good fit for this section, particularly because. The, the rest, the restrooms down there would, would also be land and water. Uh, conservation fund, which. Means that the land is basically encumbered, and so this, this grant, we had a lot of the. Um. A lot of the grants still work. Was already taken care of by way of the, the restoration. Um, grant, so. That, that, that's. I'm kind of setting the table here. So um, this was, this was the. The last phase in the twenty sixteen. Um, right. Corridor. Brother.
And so, I mean, three hundred thousand dollars is not a small amount of money, but it's not a huge amount of money either. So what exactly will that do on this drawing? Like, I don't know what all the circles are. I don't. I don't know what these things.
So it does expand the, it widens the sidewalk to fourteen feet.
Yep.
There are so wide that if you're talking about the benches, the um. Landscaping, the mobilization, there's also quite a bit of utility work. Uh, as, as um, Mike can probably. Um. Go into more detail, there is, there is uh, drainage issues. There are drainage from. The, the buildings. That need to be corrected. And so once we pull the sidewalk up. Um, we will. Fix those rain additions, so runoff actually goes into stormwater instead of sanitary. That corrects?
I think right. Storm drains currently on the, on those blocks are. We documented that some of those are going to our sanitary. So we see a. Surcharge, if you will, from those buildings, so. With the sidewalk removal, we're going to build a storm sewer. Try to reverse some of those flow and get the, the lake street into the storm sewer with the project.
So primarily the widening, widening of the sidewalk and these undergrounding issues, that's primarily what's.
As well as the many.
Bents, picnic tables.
Okay, thank you.
This was discussed at the downtown management board many times. Uh, one of the pieces, and so they were very involved with this. One of the pieces that uh. They also rejected some of the stuff. Uh, there was a proposal by Deckard Grader. To put lights in all of the trees, up the trees, post wires, lighting on those large. Trees that are down there now.
Hmm.
And uh, that was basically shut down by the downtown. Management board as well as uh, city staff that that wouldn't be. A part of it. Um, I think it was, has been well studied, well looked at. I, I think it's a very positive step in Bataski's ability to make more opportunities for people to have lunch downtown. To walk downtown. If you walk through there during lunchtime, there are, it is, it is crowded with every table, picnic table is taken by kids, families. Workers, and I think by expanding this, we can then get more tables along that whole corridor. That would allow more opportunities for people to enjoy the outside of Bataski Park.
Is that what the circles are? Sorry to keep going.
Those are trees.
Trees. Okay, thank you.
Mister Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks, Mr. Moore, for your question. I actually was trying to. I, I remember if I had seen this before or not, um, so that clarified some questions. It's helpful. And um, you know, I. I had some reservations, but you know, this, here, this is a final stage. Of a, a long coming project and that we already have, you know, it is, when, it does not look great on the city to. Go forward these grants and get approval and then at the last minute drop out, so I don't. I don't have strong enough reservations to um. Way against this by any means.
Do you have questions about it, though?
I, I think they've just answered, um, you know, it's. It's, it's just that, yeah, so the fourteen, the fourteen foot um, is long from the back, the restrooms. North and just along the goings.
Base.
To Bay Street. Yeah, okay. I think I am getting it now.
So when it's referencing that trail, eight foot wide or more, is that the sidewalk? Is that what it's?
So that, that is a box that you check when you apply for. They look at that as a trail that's eight foot, it's technically an ADA trail. But we are committed to fourteen feet, so that's why it has like that.
Again, it's, it's for the opportunity for more tables for people to better flow through there. Uh, it just opens it up completely. Uh.
Pet Park, Pet Park has accessibility.
Yeah.
Ms. Walker?
This will certainly help. Leading some.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so can you tell me, right now, the sidewalk is eight foot, because that's the ADA compliance of that sidewalk, correct? And is there any idea of like maybe undergrounding or putting any like heated sidewalks on that side? I mean, obviously that would fall into the auspice of Parks and Rec. To maintain the snow load on, on those sidewalks, on either side of the building, right, on Howard Street?
There hasn't been that discussion.
You understand that what it would require would be a boiler to be put into somebody's. Building.
Okay, so there's no discussion about um, putting heated sidewalks on that side of, of the buildings or? So, and so right now that's salted and sanded and maintained by Parks and Rec?
No.
No, um. E P W. Intend tools.
Okay.
Becky?
It's a contracted service through the D M P.
Yes.
Good, okay.
Another question?
That's all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Mister Shields?
I know you're late, so uh, thanks for um, your patience on this one. It's because curiosity mentioned the, the getting the water going to the stormwater. Um, with the Morrison Council just down, down the, from Bay Street there and the rain gardens. Um, is there an ability to do some green stormwater infrastructure in the future at, in a later stage? To, um, to reduce some of those costs or? Is that?
Well, there is a pervious edge on the sidewalk. Which I assume will be all connected as part of that underground utility.
Fair enough.
There's a pervious edge, is that what you said, along the sidewalk? And like, it would go up to the glass?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, grass or, or the utilities. I'm not sure how the, how that will, it will all round out, drawn out, but. There. There is in the design. Um, I believe it's, it's a foot or eighteen inches of pervious. Um. Pervious edge on the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? I believe we have a motion, don't we? Yeah, we do. Any others? Does public wish to weigh in on this? For being none, I go to city clerk. Uh, back for roll.
Walker?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
DeMore?
I.
Shields?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work towards this. Uh, I know you worked with uh, the downtown management board with Becky. To make sure that this was a smooth transition for both, both boards. Um. I've got one question. Um. I. Like, somebody called me even on city council. Um, when we get our capital improvement, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-eight, which will, next year will be twenty-four to twenty-nine. Would it be feasible for us to go rather than being it completely done? Is it feasible to go to, at least let the? City planning. Commission also be a part of this more?
Yeah, when I, when I spoke with planning commission members, hearing, hearing their concerns, how I've historically been a part of this process is. We have a combined. I would call a work session. Um. Typically, it's been like a Saturday morning, doesn't need to be a Saturday, but it. That's historically, that's what I'm used to, like a half day, eight to noon, where all my, all the department heads are here. Each of them will talk at length about their individual projects within the plan, so that questions can get answered. At, at that sort of a function. So both bodies are hearing the same information at the same time. And then if there's feedback, uh, we can certainly engage in that discussion. Compile the final plan that goes before planning commission and then uh, council, but. That's my vision hat next year as we start this process, that we have a combined work session that we're, we're all working through this collaboratively at the same time.
Feel good about that, counsel? Feel good about that, planners, planning commission? I know it was an issue, it's been discussed on rumblings, so I'm, I'm glad. I know Shane, you are the first person to step up and go. Let's, let's make whatever we have better.
Yeah, certainly more, more eyes on things, more input. Um, you know, you all will be out in the community. To be able to set the, not sell our projects, but talk about our projects, so. When questions arise, either a planning commission member or a city council member can say, yeah, it's. Part of our CIP, this is what's gonna happen, so you all can be out there kind of talking about city projects. Um, you know, at, at length with your constituents.
Okay, next, I would like to give each of you an opportunity for a final comments, uh, council comments. I'll start with Mr. Moore. It looks like you have more of a question.
Yeah. I was just gonna follow up along those lines to inquire, is this available online or in a PDF? So we can already outreach it to constituents for input?
Yes, it could spend on the website since uh, middle of net last week, I think.
Okay.
Um, so it's out there, it's, it's prominently displayed. Um. So yeah, feel free to share it and uh, if you, if you get input, obviously feel free to reach back out to us.
So did you want me to go?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So just two items. Um, I was pleased to hear you mention Shane, ARPA funds. And I don't know how my colleagues on council feel, but I am very interested to have a conversation about the use of those ARPA funds. Um, so that's one thing. And second of all, I'm also interested in that report from Housing North. Uh, that would be very helpful to me since I was not on council when that decision was initially made. To be able to hear a report from them as to. You know, what they've been doing and what they project to do going forward, so, thank you.
We'll set that up on the agenda. Shane, so that they can come in and do a report to city council, please.
Yes, if, if the council desires, I can also set one up with an L E A. Um, as there'll be a, an allocation for consideration for them as well.
You're good with that, counsel?
Yeah, sure, yeah. I appreciate, it's really helpful.
I think it's something they should probably do on a yearly basis, and that way they'll give you a summation of. Uh, events or actions that have happened with, due to our funding. Participation.
I will say in both efforts, it's, it's a long game, right? It's, these are things that um. It's, these are things that, um, economic development, you know, affordable workforce housing, these are not things that you snap your fingers and. Uh, minutes, it's here, so. My advice to council is just, let's proceed with patience and obviously continue to hold our partners, um, accountable, that's certainly an expectation, but. These things, uh, it's a process, they take time to kind of materialize and put together, so.
I'm sure council will will do that, too. Next, uh, word two, Derek Shields, could you give us your comment?
Just wanted to, uh, thank the Downtown Management Board for their, um, strategic planning documents. I, uh, was reading through that just this last, this weekend, and it's really good, it's really, uh, eye opening, informative, I think the consultant did a good job. One line in particular, just underlined earlier today, special places like Potaski are successful because of their perpetual incremental evolution. Um, I, that's, it kind of rings true, uh, with me, and so I encourage council members to to read this document. Thanks, Southern Board, thanks, Becky.
Word three. Thank you, Mayor, one quick cabinet tomorrow morning, it's Rotary Sunrise, seven thirty, I'm pleased to, uh, I'll be introducing Shane Horn to the Rotary Group.
Ms. Walker, word four.
Thank you, Mayor, um, couple of items, on September the twenty ninth, there's a public meeting, um, with the Emmett County Commissioners about transit. And apparently, the, um, there's a new proposal on the table that doesn't involve an authority, which was a little bit disheartening, because obviously, we had given, um. Letters of support in support of an authority to kind of take that heavy lift entirely off of Emmett County and kind of disperse that amongst. Um, our data sever nations, federal tribes, and accessing federal monies and nonprofits and whatnot, but nonetheless, they have come up with another plan, and so there's gonna be an opportunity for public input. And I would hope that there would be some kind of city representation at that meeting in support. If not of a transit authority of some kind of transportation for Emmett County. Um, also, as the mayor had mentioned, and Shane had mentioned in his, um, comments. And his, um, city manager comments that there was a solar tour, uh, sponsored by, uh, Grow Solar Little Travers, um, the Groundwork Center, we did a. A tour of all these residential. What I would consider people that would be very early adapters of renewable energy, those kind of, those transiters that are, happen to have the money to invest in renewable energy for their homes. And I was very pleased to learn that it was very much a learning experience with the city of Potaski, coming out to those different sites and. And working through the issues of what it means to have, um, people feeding back and net metering into the grid, so I was delighted to hear that it was a really positive experience for our residents and that. They had, um, Mike and his crew from Department of Public Works and the utilities coming out and just kind of like hashing it out, what this looks like, what this means, and. When there's, um. Loss of power, how you have to communicate with those households to make sure that they're not feeding the grid and putting our workers in danger of. Electrocution possibly, I mean, there's so many things to be considered, and it was just really delightful to hear that it was very much a learning experience and a very positive experience for our residents. To work with the municipality and our utility, our own, you own utility, so I was delighted to hear that, and it's really exciting. To see the momentum of a decentralized renewable energy system, because we are gonna need that all of the above strategy of. Residents and businesses investing in renewable energy as well as, um, public private partnerships for demonstration, and then, of course, the. Utility scale that we need to get there, um, with M M M P, so all good things and very exciting for the city, and Shane did a great job of representing. What we have going on here and City Hall as well, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Uh, tomorrow. Uh, several of us will be maybe meeting, we have set up a, uh, community art. Project, uh, community art. Uh, to start giving that into our community, as you know, a lot of cities don't have, we have, don't have as much as a lot of cities. For public art, just so whether it be on the waterfront, whether it be downtown, neighborhood parks. And we'll be meeting tomorrow to continue, there'll be our second meeting, and we'll keep you posted on that. Um, we're looking forward, I think, to making sure that we have local artists will will be involved with this heavily, very heavily. Crooked Tree. The tribe, we've got different agencies and groups that will be involved with this process. So we're really looking forward to that, I think it'll spruce city up, as you said, Mister Shields, move the city forward. To envision what's better for us. Sorry we stayed so late here tonight, it's already dark, just tells us that the fall is here. Otherwise, it'd be summer and we could go out and see the sunset, so no further business to come before this council, I call this meeting adjourned.